Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call this Will Carney Planning and Zoning Regular December 2nd Board Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roger, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Louis Navarette? Karen Warwick? Roger Bentonhausen? Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefer?
Here.
Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Here.
All six, all six of our seven committee members are present, so we have a quorum. I'm going to ask everybody to, who's going to speak tonight, to swear in. I'll swear you in en masse, so please raise your right hand. I swear to tell the truth, all the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God, I do. Thank you. Anyone who has a cellphone, please turn it down, turn it off, or put it in airplane mode. Thank you very much. Our first case tonight is going to be ZZ-25-107 EK. And Marguerite Kenny will be the presenter for this case.
EK Motors. I was wondering, there's not a space there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So zoning case CC25107 takes place in Piattone Township. The property address is 7958 Kennedy Road in Piattone, and as you mentioned, the applicant and owner is EK Motors LLC, where David Kylo is 100% owner. And the applicant is here tonight requesting several variances in order to build a detached garage and bring the property into compliance. So on the screen, we have the zoning map. You can see this area is a little bit unique for this area. We have some agricultural A1, we have some industrial I1, and then we have some highway commercial, which is the Piattone Public Works facility. And you can see by the subject property outline in blue, it is relatively small. This parcel was created back in July 1st of 1967, and it is only half an acre. And at that time, the parcel was created, the zoning ordinance required the A1 agricultural districts to be a minimum of one acre. So it was created already deficient for the standards at that time. Currently, you're well aware, A1 is typically 10 acres and has 300 feet of frontage. The subject property only has 297.2 feet of frontage, which is both along Rath G and Kennedy. And the applicant is requesting both variances for lot area and frontage for the A1. You can see there are no residential zoning districts. It is solely commercial, industrial, or agricultural. So the property is also improved with a one-story frame residence and a 240-square-foot garage along the northern side of the property. And I can zoom in. The residence appears in aerial photography as early as 1939. Per the Piattone Township Rural Structure Survey, this house was previously the Piper School, which was a one-room schoolhouse. It closed in 1950, and then it was converted into the residence that it is today. Per the Illinois Department of Transportation, annual average daily traffic count in this area, Kennedy Road sees fewer than 550 vehicle trips, and Rath G does not have an actual count, so it's even less. So there's not a lot of traffic coming and going in this area. The parcel does not lie within a facility planning area, and the closest one would be Piattone, and that's approximately one-half mile north. And then also, just looking at this property, since it does have two street frontages, it technically does not have a rear yard setback, so it has two side property setbacks. Looking at the Platte survey that was submitted, you can see here that the house itself is 63.7 feet from the center line of Rath G and 65.9 feet from the center line of Kennedy. The detached garage is 51.7 feet from the center line of Rath G and 7.2 feet from the northern property line. And the applicant is requesting variances to bring this garage on the north side into compliance, as well as the proposed 22-by-26-foot detached garage that would be located on the south side. That's 33 feet from the center line of Kennedy Road and 50 feet from the eastern property line. So the yellow circles are just showing the closest setbacks, and that's what the variances are being requested, so that all the other existing structures on the property are also brought into compliance. So looking at the property, this is looking east from Rath G. This is looking north from Kennedy. This is looking along that northern property line from Rath G and that existing detached garage. This is looking north along the street setback along Rath G. And then this is looking at the proposed detached garage and that street setback along Kennedy. And looking north along Rath G and the neighboring parcel. I do want to note that the house that is adjacent to the property, if you recall the zoning map, it's technically zoned I1, but it has been a residence ever since it was zoned I1. And then this is looking east along Kennedy at the neighboring parcels and along the road. And this is looking across at the northwest corner for Rath G and Kennedy. So the criteria in which variances are evaluated is shown on the screen or the next couple of slides, and an in-depth analysis is in the staff report, but to briefly summarize, staff finds that there is a hardship present, and it results in a unique circumstance. The applicant purchased this property as it's configured in 2022, and the parcel being originally created in 1967 is significantly deficient to meet any A1 standards whatsoever. The area is either A1 or I1, and the applicant is intending to use it residentially, which is a permitted use in the A1 district. But rezoning, since there is no other residential district in the area, would be considered spot zoning. And staff would not be supportive of spot zoning. So the applicant's options were either rezoning the parcel or going through the variances that they are requesting tonight. And staff finds that the variances, if granted, would not alter the essential character. The area is a mix of A1, I1 uses for the last 66 years. And you can see, as I mentioned, the adjacent parcel north is used residentially despite being zoned industrially. For the second criterion, staff finds, again, there is a hardship. This parcel is half an acre. There's no way any structure on this site would actually meet any of the setbacks. It's not wide enough to meet both the street and side yard setback, nor does it meet any lot area or frontage. Staff finds the conditions upon this particular request would not generally be applicable to A1. Normally, they are larger than a half acre, and in this instance, it is not. The applicant is voluntarily coming in to bring the parcel into compliance, really to get a building permit for another detached garage that is, you know, a standard garage size. It's not a huge pole building. The applicant's also is not creating the hardship. This lot itself was created back in the 60s. Granting the variances would not be detrimental to the public welfare or unduly injurious to other property improvements in the neighborhood. And it would not impair air supply or flow to the property or adjacent properties. It would also not substantially increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety. This area, you know, while that proposed detached garage would be adjacent to the 33-foot right-of-way easement located along Kennedy Road, the traffic volume in this area is low, and there are no roadway improvements proposed at this time. So it's not seen as being detrimental to the safety in the area. Of the agencies notified, none objected, and staff is recommending approval of all the variances. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions? Oh, thank you very much. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case here tonight? There are not. Okay. Is Mr. Kylo here or representing? Okay. Mr. Kylo, there's no concerns, citizens, or, or objectors to your case. And we have a recommendation from staff to approve. So if you care to, we will just vote. If you'd rather, you're welcome to come up and speak. Okay. So on case number ZZ25107-V-25144 and V-25148 and V-25149 and V-25150 and V-25163, I would like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, case number ZZ25107, variance 25144, move for the approval of a variance for minimum street yard setback, Kennedy Road from 100 feet to 33 feet.
Second.
I have a motion second. May I have a roll call, please?
Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefer?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navarette? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
And same case number, variance 25148, move for the approval of a variance for minimum street yard setback, Ratchee Road from 100 feet to 51.7 feet.
Second.
I have a motion second. Please roll call.
Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefer?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navarette? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
And same case number, variance number 25149, move for the approval of a variance for minimum lot area from 10 acres to 0.507 acres.
Second.
Kimberly Mitchell?
Yes, please.
John Kiefer?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navarette? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
And same case number, variance number 25150, move for the approval of variance for minimum lot frontage from 300 feet to 20, 297.2 feet.
Second.
Kimberly, Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefer?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navarette? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
And same case number, variance number 25163, move for the approval of a variance for minimum side yard setback, north side from 50 feet to 7.2 feet.
Second.
Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefer?
Yes.
Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
Louis Navarette? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, sir, you have passed everything. So.
Boy, all those seconded into the motion, Roger, makes me thirsty.
Our next case tonight is ZZ-25-108/V-25145, and his percentage will be our presenter. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Yes, I'll be going over zoning case 25018. The owner of the property is Edward Alguizine and Bessie, Bessie Alguizine Trust. The agent is Edward Alguizine. The applicants are requesting a variance to allow the construction of a pole barn on the property. Here we have a quick zoning map of the property. The image shows, again, zoning map property, subject property outlined in red. The subject property is zoned A1 with 5.09 acres in area and 170 feet of lot frontage. Along Bar Road, the A1 zoning district, as mentioned before, requires a minimum lot area of 10 acres and 300 feet of lot frontage. However, the property was created on August 2022, 1977. Therefore, the property is deemed to be a legal non-conforming parcel. Building permits can be issued for legal non-conforming parcels, given that the proposed structure meets all setbacks. Here we have an aerial view of the subject property. The property is approved as a single-family home and two large pole barns. The property owner submitted a building permit to construct a 60-by-80 new pole barn on the property. The proposed location of the pole barn is encroaching onto the required 50-foot rear yard setback for the A1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting the variance rather than moving the pole barn to meet the 50-foot setback. Here we have a Platte survey of the property. It's showing the 60-by-80 proposed pole barn kind of towards the bottom half of the screen. Here we have a few pictures of the property. First, the view looking south at the subject property. Here we have the aerial view, looking at the proposed pole building in yellow. Here we have a different perspective of another aerial view, showing the proposed pole building in yellow. We have the view looking north at the adjacent property across Bar Road. The view looking east down Bar Road. And the view looking west down Bar Road. Now looking over the variance tangential criteria, staff finds that the plight of the owner is not due to unique circumstances. It is the desire of the property owner to want to build a pole barn 20 feet from the rear property line. A personal desire cannot be considered a unique circumstance. Staff also finds that the variance may alter the essential character of the locality. Looking at the surrounding area, there are no parcels that have received approval of a variance for rear yard setback. Additionally, there are also no parcels that appear to have a structure that encroaches onto the rear yard setback. Now looking at sections two, staff also finds that the particular physical surroundings does not result in a particular hardship. There are other suitable locations on the property which the pole barn could be built meeting the 50-foot rear setback. Staff finds that the conditions on which the variance application is based would be generally applicable to other properties. The desire to build a structure encroaching into setbacks can be seen as a common request among A1 zone properties. And lastly, staff finds that granting the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or improvements in the neighborhood. The pole barn will be constructed on the southern property, southern portion of the property, away from any nearby structures. With that said, staff is recommending denial of the variance. Of the agencies notified, there were no comments or concerns, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
The only problem that we have is that he prefers to have it where it's sitting at this point.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Can you go back to the aerial shot of the property? So.
Yes. Is it this one here?
It appears that the footprint of the property does not match up with the lines. If you look at what's in the yard or what they're, is that the case, or?
That is not the case. It's just due to the way aerial photography is laid out. But yes, all the, all the structures on the property are within their property boundaries, so.
All right. Yeah, the way this looks, there's lots, okay. Disregard this picture.
Yeah, maybe you get a better picture.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case here tonight? There are not. Okay. Would the principal of the case please come up? Hi, would you please give your name for the record right up there at the podium?
Name is Edward Alguizine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Alguizine, you see, they recommended a denial. Would you tell us the reasoning why you don't want to move your?
If you bring that picture back up of it, I can explain it a little to you. Okay, if we the one structure to the east, or the west, I'm sorry, is a barn which we have livestock in. In front of the house, the only other physical place you could put it would be in front of the cow's pen, but it would cover the driveway. We wouldn't be 50 foot from the property line there either. So this is kind of the only place that it really fits, because the other grass patch over there is a septic field. It's just east of the house.
I take it you prefer not to have your pole barn in front of your house towards the road, too?
Correct.
Okay.
You know.
Stating the obvious here, then.
Yeah, because there's, I mean, there's a hill there. It's not a flood plain or nothing, but there's a hill, so.
That causes problems, yeah.
Right, that would cause us problem with, with putting a building there. So this is kind of why we've gone with that particular spot, because that's kind of the only place that it really is going to fit.
Okay, I understand. Anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On ZZ25-108/V-25145, I'd like a motion. Mr. Chairman, for ZZ25-108/V-25-145, given nobody from the public to agree with the staff denial, I'll make a motion for approval for a variance for rear setback from 50 feet to 20 feet.
Second.
I have a motion and second. May I have a roll call?
Karen Warwick? Louis Navarette? Roger Bentonhausen?
Yes.
John Kiefer?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, sir. You're good. Next case tonight is ZZ-25-111/M-25-018 and S-25-043. And Kelly Krasinski will be our presenter tonight. Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening. So, yeah, this is ZZ25-111. The owner of the property is Brandon Rhodes CCDD LLC. The agent is Matthew Marquetti of Brandon Rhodes CCDD LLC. And the attorney is Nathaniel Washburn with KGG LLC. The agent is requesting a map amendment to I1 and a special use permit for clean construction or demolition debris fill operations. Here is an aerial view of the property. The subject site is about 11.5 acres with 191 feet of frontage along Brandon Road. The city of Joliet boundary is located just 30 feet south of the southern property line. The property is located within the Joliet facility planning area and is just south of the Displanes River Valley Enterprise Zone. Here's a photo of the current zoning map with the property outlined in red. The subject property is currently zoned A1 and is surrounded by other A1 properties. The closest I2 district is about 110 feet south of the subject property. Here's a photo of the site plan for the property. Currently, this site is, the eastern portion of the property is farmland, and the western portion consists of unimproved forested land. The applicant is looking to bring in fill material to the property and grade the property in order to have it for future industrial development. Here is a view looking north along Brandon Road. This is looking east across in the subject property. This is looking south along Brandon Road. This is looking southwest along, oh, sorry. This is looking south along Brandon Road. This is looking southwest at the subject property. This is looking west at the subject property. And this is looking northwest at the subject property. So to go over the map amendment review criteria, there is a full analysis in the staff report, but for a summary, for one and two, the existing uses within a half-mile include a mix of agricultural, residential, industrial, located in the city of Joliet and unincorporated. Um, to the north and west, the land is primary agricultural or unimproved. Um, there is one residential subdivision located to the north and a few residential homes located in the south. Um, however, the dominant character of the area is industrial. Directly to the east is the quarry along with a trucking company, um, and to the south is Gallagher Asphalt. Um, to the west, we have um, an intermodal terminal as well as a commed substation. Um, and major rail lines are also located to the north. Oh, sorry. Based on this, um, it's staff's opinion that the proposed use is consistent with the established industrial nature of the area. Um, with the zoning districts within a half mile radius includes industrial, residential, and agricultural districts. Within the city of Joliet, all zoning within this half-mile radius is industrial, including I one, I two, and intermodal terminal districts. Um, with this, um, staff finds that the request to rezone the subject property to I two is compatible with the um, surrounding zoning patterns and existing industrial in the area. Um, so for three and four for the map amendment criteria, um, the property is currently zoned A one is used for farming, but the applicant intends to operate clean construction and demolition debris fill, um, which would not be permitted under A one. Because of this, they are requesting um, to rezone to the I two district and a special use permit for um, their um, C C D D operations. Um, for number four, this site was rezoned to A one in nineteen seventy-eight, but the surrounding area has since transitioned toward industrial uses, including nearby rezonings and annexations into the city of Joliet. Um, even though there's been many industrial annexations into the city of Joliet, um, this property does not abut the city of Joliet, so it's unable to annex at this time. Um, staff finds that this is consistent with the twenty-twelve um, land resource management plan. Um, the planned future use of industrial does fit the freestanding industry guidelines. Um, also, staff found that the two thousand and seven city of Joliet South Side Comprehensive Plan um, has a site um, planned for industrial use. Um, lastly, for the map amendment criteria, the least a score was calculated at one twenty-seven, um, placing it in potential growth and incorporate areas, which is consistent with the proposed zoning district. Um, and then this is to quickly go over the special use permit criteria. Um, staff finds for point number one that the use will not be detrimental to the public health or safety. Um, the proposed operation is limited um, to clean, regulated build under the state and federal um, requirements. Um, for number two, the use is compatible with the surrounding industrial properties and is not expected to harm neighboring uses. Um, this is preparing the site for future industrial development, which may enhance the property values in the area. For number three, staff finds the use would not impede the or the development of nearby property. Um, filling the supply or filling the site supports um, continuing into industrial developments in the area. Um, staff finds that adequate utilities, access, and drainage will be required through permitting, um, including a site development permit for the fill operations and also future developments. And then lastly, the applicant must comply with the fill operations standards and regulations along with all state and federal requirements, um, making sure they comply with all applicable regulations. Um, of agencies notified, there were no objections, but there were comments received. Um, these can all be found on pages fifteen and sixteen in the staff report. Um, of the comments received, staff would like to note that the Illinois Department of Natural Resources does have concerns regarding the Osprey bird and the rusty patched bumblebee. Um, staff has added a condition that um, that requires them to meet the suggestions that they provided. Um, another comment is there was a memo with a letter of objection that was provided um, that was sent just prior to this meeting, um, that should be in front of you guys. Um, and then lastly, staff is recommending approval of the math amendment from A one to I two, and then there our staff is also recommending approval of the special use permit with four conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, I know the attorney and applicant is here, and then there is also um, people from the public to speak on this as well. So are there any questions for me?
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions right now?
So if approved, the whole ten acres could have debris on it, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so, but I, yeah, I, but I believe they're looking to do clean construction fill instead of.
Well, but.
But yes, yeah.
The entire ten acres. So by looking at the aerial map here, it looks like there's a natural water wave, at least one, that I'm thinking goes north to south. And your map there showed, I believe, a topographic with the contour map, quite a bit of fall from the east to the west of this. How do they address or the county regulate them with stormwater that may be coming from the nor, I'm thinking from the south and running north, I may be wrong. I know when I come across the Brandon Road Bridge, it's a long chug all the way uphill to Laraway, which isn't there anymore. Of course, nobody goes that way anymore because it's not a bridge.
The bridge is, yeah, shut down.
Um, I mean, we're talking a long linear strip here, and if they uh, put two foot of clean construction debris on the west side and twelve foot on the east side to make the entire ten acres level, which I'm assuming they probably can, what does water that normally flow across this property do? I'm assuming the land resource management of the county kicks in.
Yeah.
This is something that's regulated, I mean, can they go twenty feet of fill, can they go thirty feet of fill in areas? And then back to my construction days, it was a big no-no to build anything on fill. I knew of entire subdivision areas that were told they're going to have to wait ten to twenty years before they could even build, but uh, industrial, I guess, is a little different than houses with foundations and basements, but some of the things I don't quite understand with this proposal, because it does, the whole intention of the industrial is for future development.
Mm-hmm.
I think maybe we should hold that question for the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I mean, they are going to be required to comply with our stormwater ordinance, obviously. Um, and they also have to get the state and federal permits for this as well, which I'm assuming they have to submit certain requirements for that, so.
And then for that tiny bit of me that's a tree-hugging lover, all the trees are going to be wiped out, obviously.
I'm assuming so, yeah.
Okay.
That would be a question for the applicant, though.
Thing about the Osprey and other natural habitats that are on the property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, Osprey sold them mountain nested trees, but that's all right.
They could like water. So be close to the water.
Thank you very much. Are there any concerned citizens or objectors to this case here tonight? One, okay. I'm going to let them speak first, and then I'll give you an opportunity to speak. Uh, will I have the principals come down, please?
Fortunately or unfortunately, you get my smiling face this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Washburn, how are you, sir?
I am doing well, thank you. Uh, Nate Washburn with K G G L L C, I'm the attorney for the applicant. Uh, so just to, I think, clarify a couple of things uh, for you all, we certainly appreciate staff's report. Uh, I do think it was a very good and comprehensive report and summarizes uh, the vast majority of what we've got going on here. What I will say is while Brandon Road LLC is the entity, or I think it's Brandon Road, C C D D L L C, uh, is the entity that acquired the property, this portion, this parcel, and then several others on the north side uh, of uh, what used, well, what is uh, the, what formerly was Lincoln Stone Quarry, which is the coal ash borrow pit from the coal fire plant. The stuff sandwiched between the road and the river was also acquired by this same entity in the same transaction. All of it was owned by Lincoln Stone Quarry. We had actually explored purchasing the borrow pit itself, but due to its level of environmental uh, situations, uh, we decided that we were not interested in acquiring that at this time uh, until some were uh, till the uh, coal fire plant uh, finishes its reclamation of what it needs to deal with. Uh, that being said, this strip, as you can tell, is sort of isolated from anything else. Uh, and the principals, Matt Marquetti and Vince Pharaoh, are also the principals of P T Pharaoh Construction. So this is for them, a, I'll say a cost savings in that they're in the road construction business, they generate clean construction debris, and they need a place to plop it. And if they don't have their own place to plop it, they have to pay somebody for the privilege of taking the debris from the road contracts that they are let. So this for them is a site that is eligible for fill. We certainly understand that there are concerns about soils, I believe, uh, one was about erosion controls. We are going to take all proper precautions and engineering concerns to make sure that there is no stormwater runoff that would be in violation of the riparian rights. We can't, as you are all well aware, release anything more onto neighboring properties than we were releasing prior. And we also can't necessarily cause anything to dam up, back up, or flood somebody else's property, that would be illegal. We have to comply with all those laws anyways. Our engineering is only going to let us fill as much as we are legally capable of. Could that be ten feet in some areas and twenty-five feet in others? Absolutely. But it, the goal would be to have a level site at the end of this, which could then be developed in the future. To your point about what can be built on these soils, again, anytime you're dealing with a fill site, it's not that they can't be built on, it's how you build on them is subject to further engineering. Typically, that boils down to what's our level of compaction? And then once you get beyond that, depending on the answers, you know, they could be, a future developer could be required to put in uh, geo pillars or something else to further support the site. But right now, the main goal is to get this approved as a fill site. And we applied it as a C C D D because the county's ordinance does not distinguish between just clean dirt and actual construction debris. They are more, less treated the same under the county's ordinance. But the intent for this site was principally to be just clean fill and not necessarily construction debris. In order to get construction debris, we have to, of course, apply to the state. Uh, assuming we get through these hearings, we would then seek all of those permits with the state. The state regulates what, again, how much we can do, where the water can go, and everything we would be doing uh, according to the applicable uh, statutes and ordinances. What the final use of this would be, I can't tell you right now. Certainly, uh, you know, given its location and its proximity to the existing intermodals in Joliet and existing quarries that are out there, you know, we felt industrial zoning I two was appropriate. Uh, you know, obviously, a lot of things that might uh, scare people require special uses even in the I two district, so were there to be something that some might find objectionable, we'd be back here again applying for special use permits anyways, giving everybody the opportunity to comment. But since a clean construction debris can only be permitted in the industrial I will, I two or I three zoning, we picked the less aggressive of the two and are seeking this principally now to support their their other business and the need for uh, a site to dump clean fill and uh, other debris.
And inferring from what you've said, their uh, other business being a rogue construction business mainly, and the clean construction debris that we can assume is going to go in there will be concrete and asphalt, things like that.
Yeah, but it, well, principally, what we are going to be putting there, our intent is to use, essentially use it for clean fill, just dirt, not necessarily the construction debris. Uh, but to your point, if it, uh, again, assuming it gets fully permitted for construction, clean fill, construction debris, it would be crushed asphalt and crushed concrete would be the
Okay.
most likely materials uh, that would be going in there, yes.
This may not be a question for you, but uh, this means material can only come in, can't go out?
Yes, because this isn't a, as far as I'm aware, the ordinance wouldn't allow for anything to go out, because that's a.
So it couldn't become a staging yard for construction projects where, say, three hundred loads of grindings come in, and then two weeks later, a hundred loads of grindings go back out?
No, that would require us to, I believe, come in for an, a special use, uh, I don't even know what that would be categorized uh, currently.
Request for them near construction projects.
Yeah, and the one thing I can say is, given where this location is, it was, and that's why we're here on this eleven acres and not on the rest of the assemblage we purchased at the same time. This site is narrow, it's surrounded by commed, I think, on the north, and uh, is a gas pipeline on the south. And right past that is Joliet. We don't have uh, a direct contiguity with Joliet as a result of these pipelines and commed easements. But there's not a whole lot you're going to be able to build on a long, narrow stretch like this. But it was part of the package of what we were purchasing, and the best use we could figure for this kind of orphaned strip that really doesn't make a lot of sense was to use it as a fill site, get it zoned industrial, and then after it's been filled, if we find a user that has some plans, of course, we would submit plans to the county's uh, land use department, come in for any special uses that might be required. Uh, but it's in an existing industrial corridor, we believe the zoning would match what both Joliet's long-term plans and the county's kind of plans for what this region has become. And to your point, you know, anything that we would be doing other than filling the hole or bringing it to grade, unless it's a permitted use in the I two, we would be back here to ask you for further permissions before we do anything.
Okay. And you got one?
I do.
Yeah.
Do you own properties on, do they own properties on both sides of this piece?
No, so that's the, this is the, and uh, without pulling up a much larger aerial shot that would show the whole uh, area, and I don't know that I've got one, I guess I do, it's in the staff's report on the recommendations page, uh, on page two. If you actually look at that, you'll see our little strip. There's the corridor for, I can't remember if it's high tension lines or a pipeline that's just north of us, that separates this strip from Lincoln Stone Quarry's large hole in the ground, which has all the water in it. And then that narrow wedge, more or less, that's between the road and the river, we also acquired that. All of that was at one point in time owned by Lincoln Stone Quarry, who still maintains the pit. We bought essentially north of the pit and south of the pit, but it's separated by other property owners, so this one really is out on an island. We don't, other than zoning it for fill, the reason it's never done anything in all this time is it's a very long, narrow strip of ag land that nobody, you know, it's not being farmed, uh, well, it is in part being farmed, but a lot of it because the grade is trees. To your point, yes, in order to fill it, we would have to clear the site. Uh, certainly, as the site develops, the city, uh, the county's uh, landscaping ordinances and everything would come into play, so were somebody to develop this in the future, they would have to comply with all of that. But at least for our purposes, because the, the part that is going to get filled the most is the back half of the property where it is the most below grade. Not that there won't be a little bit of fill to level everything off uh, near the front of the property, but it's really that back, I'd say, third of the property that is really what where most of the fill is going to go.
So all the access to this property is going to come from Brandon Road?
Yes, that's the only access we have is directly onto Brandon Road, and I think D O T did give us some comments about that for future uh, you know, users. Um, but that is where the access would come from, because it doesn't have any other frontage.
It looks pretty narrow, there's like no access shown on the, on these drawings here.
Yeah, well, and that's specifically because this is a fill plan, it's not really a plan to do something, it's a plan to fill the hole.
But yeah, there's no, like, roadway.
Yeah, we're, right now, all we are proposing to do is zone it and get it approved for fill. Again, what you're thinking of is, you know, where would you put a building, or where would you put a, an entrance? All of that would be in a future plan that we would either bring forward as part of a special use or submit to the building department as part of a permitted use that we would then go through the proper process.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I just had one. I don't know if you answered John's question completely. Um, once the product is hauled in, it stays there, it's not used as a staging area to bring product back out again at some time? I don't know if you.
Uh, so.
You're kind of vague on your answer there.
So, uh, again, uh, and I will try to be as crystal clear as I can. What we are looking to do right now is take a site that is not level, that has a substantial dip on the back third of it, bring it all up to one level grade, which means everything we're bringing in is to build up from bottom to level grade. None of that is being stockpiled for staging to go elsewhere. Were somebody to want to use this as a construction staging yard and do essentially what you're suggesting, bringing in crushed asphalt grindings and then hauling them out at regularity, we would need to come back and either request a special use or whatever other zoning relief would be required. Because I do not believe, unless my memory is mistaken, that a C C D D permit in and of itself allows us to both bring in and haul out, because that makes it more like a batch plant or something along those lines.
I ask those questions, I always look over at staff and read their body language. Their body language told me that they can't do that without.
Yeah.
So, to answer. So, to answer your question, no. If anybody wanted to do exactly what you're suggesting, we would be back here asking for something else, not what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Would you mind proceed up front here so we can hear from the concerned citizen?
Certainly.
Would you please come up? Please state your name for the records.
Sure, my name is Patricia Nugent. I have property at 1815 Brandon Road, so it's well within the area of this proposal. I would like staff to pull up the City of Joliet South Side Comprehensive Plan, please, on page 10. That one there. Thank you. The 2007 City of Joliet South Side Comprehensive Plan Proposed Map identifies over half the proposed site future land use to be floodplain, wetland, or open. It is not all industrial as cited on page seven of the staff report, and therefore, the proposal in future use is not compatible with the South Side Comprehension Plan. It's rather small, but if you look at it, the green there is more than half of that...
Keep talking into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's more than half of the little strip they have identified. So I encourage the commission to deny on this point and other factors. Factor one, the applicant has not submitted to Illinois Department of Natural Resources a survey and habitat assessment on potential impacts to osprey and other migratory bird species. This is a staff condition for approval. They have not submitted it. I talked to them today. As of this afternoon, they have not received any, any assessment or potential impacts for it. Factor two, there is no attachment to show that the applicant coordinated with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to assess the potential occurrence in the project area of the rusty patched bumblebee, which is federal status. Echo cat indicates a record of the state listed rusty patched bumblebee occurs in the vicinity of the project. Factor three, the Will South Cook Soil and Water Conservation District Report, number 5823, identifies 2.7 acres of the 11.5 acres of soils on the parcel are hydric. According to the report, these soils, by definition, have seasonally high water at or near the surface and are, have potential flooding or ponding problems. All hydric soils range from poorly suited to unsuitable for building. Factor four, this report identifies a freshwater marsh that exists on the south side of the property and extends onto the adjacent property. The National Wetlands Inventory identifies it as a PMMF. This is a type of wetland that is typically shallow and consists of non-wooded plants that are rooted in soil but parts extend above. An example would be cattails or reeds or grasses. Surface water is present for the entire growing season. If the surface water is not present, the water table is very high, just below the surface, keeping the soil saturated. My concern would be the disruption of soils at this site that could impact my property in terms of drainage and water table. The impact of this project on the other half of this freshwater marsh has not been included in this report. As a condition to this approval, a survey and habitat assessment on potential impacts to the freshwater marsh should be a condition of this project. The final factor, oh, I'm sorry, could you go to page 40 of the Will Soil Cook Soil Water Conservation District Report? Or not? Sure. I could go on while she's pulling that up. The final factor, in 1994, San Pano and Pius Weibel of the Illinois State Geological Survey observed three sinkholes, each about 30 feet in diameter and six to eight feet deep, and circular to elliptical in plain view. At the bottom of these sinkholes were three to four small holes leading to bedrock crevices. In addition, numerously closed depressions interpreted to be sinkholes were visible on the USGS topographic map. The 30-foot diameter sinkholes were not visible on the topographic map. This indicates that there are probably more, many more sinkholes in the area than are visible on topographic maps. Our conclusions are that there, the area south of Joliet contains numerous karst features and is underlined by a karst aquifer. As such, karst aquifers are susceptible to groundwater contamination from facilities constructed within their recharge area. Consequently, the geology and hydrogeology of this area is underlined by a karst aquifer that's overlaid by relatively thin glacial till, and the presence of sinkholes should be taken into account when considering the construction of any facilities within the recharge area of the karst aquifer. It's kind of small to see. Can you blow that up? If you, if you see on this map that little green circle, that is the marsh. And as you can see, the marsh is half on the proposed property and half off the property. So my concern is, what's going to happen when they go and fill that, which is what they intend to do, is to fill the back half larger with fill, more higher with fill? What's going to happen to the other half of that marsh? And that marsh has not been studied. It's the same ranking as the wetland inventory as those up in the Lockport area preserves. It has the same kind of wetland destination as those. The karst region that was identified by Pano? It's hard to point to it. I think there's a better one on page two, if you can show, show that map. I think it's easier to see the karst region that he was talking about. Of your report, I believe. Okay, thank you. Yes, if you could, if you can blow up the middle one? You can see the red boundary of their property. You have the green, which is wooded area coming south. You can see the tank farm there. Between the tank farm and the green woods is the karst region that Pano identified and studied in 1994. And I have... I urge this commission to deny the request to bring in fill material and to grade the property to facilitate the future development of this site. The impacts to the osprey, the rusty patched bumblebee, and the freshwater marsh are unknown. The identified sinkholes by the ISGS and the karst aquifer, aquifer near, need to be protected and not disturbed because groundwater in a karst aquifer flows rapidly and surface boring contaminants can enter the aquifer quickly and can, can travel to nearby wells in a matter of hours or days without any filtering or biological degradation that occurs en route to other types of aquifers. I have copies to present to you. One is the letter to Senator Will Homme from San Pano, who includes the karst terrain in Will County, south of Joliet, Illinois, written by San Pano and D.E. Lumen, and the email from Isabel Allen, IDNR, where she states that she is unsure if anyone has performed the habitat assessment, and she does not have any records of anyone reaching out to advise that they have done so. Who do I hand? And these two? Just a second.
Thank you. What you're passing out, we're going to our permanent records now, you?
Yes.
Okay. What I'm saying is you won't get it back.
No, I, I have one.
Okay.
This was actually 2008, I believe, is when they wrote it. The photos in the back of the article, it's the actual sinks in that area. There's some photographs of them with myself and San Pano, where he came up to identify them.
Got this one. Make sure that I end here. You guys get anything down there on that yet, huh? Okay. Yes, he's down to you. Did you see this? You saw this, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So this whole region was considered karst by the Illinois State Geological Survey. The actual karst that he's identifying in that program, it's within, the circle is a half mile, it's probably within a quarter of a mile from the site. It's well within the circle, the yellow circle.
This is a 1994 study, correct?
That's when he came up to evaluate it and show, show that, that it was a sink.
Yeah.
It started with the hazardous waste facility at ESL, which is on the end of Larway and Bran, or Larway. We had concerns at that time about whether the water was actually flowing the way they said it. And there were certain areas that had to be a certain distance from a karst region. And their engineers said it was just a tile break, and that led us to actually calling the Illinois State Geological Survey to come up and to verify that they were actual sinks. We presented, or San Pano actually presented to the Joliet Board. And then, after that...
I see a 2007 in here also, 2005, 2007.
Yes. So I've been, I've been studying this area for a very long time, and so has different agencies. It's a, it's a phenomenal area in terms of just habitat. And with less and less habitat in this region, these areas are being more and more contracted with more and more intense populations. We now have the bumblebee, and it's a federally species, being identified in this area. You have the osprey. We have an area that really has never been studied in terms of what is in the actual marsh area. So there's a lot to be studied and preserved, if that's the case. Instead of going in and filling it 20, 30 feet, 40 foot high, I'm concerned, what does, what does that do to my water supply? What does that do to my...
First of all, the county has to guarantee through their engineering offices that you're not going to get any increase in water to what they do. Or they won't give them permits to do this.
Right, but they also need to study the karst region. This is a karst aquifer, and it's been identified by the Illinois State Geological Survey. So that has to be...
We have, we have studies on the, on karst type aquifers all across the country, not necessarily this particular aquifer, except for what you're showing us here. What I'm saying is, they're familiar with karst aquifers and what their topography is and what the, the groundwater results are and all the other things. Hopefully, we have people in the county who are up on top of that.
Right, well, that was one concern. The other concern...
Engineering department, you know?
The other concern is actually the habitat. You have endangered species located in this particular area, and, and they have not done the studies to say if they're on this property or not.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, I understand what you're saying, yes.
Yes, no. If I can address something different, because obviously, whether this is a karst area or not, and what causes a karst area is probably out of the area of expertise of any of us. I would ask you a question about that, but I want to go back to the woods in this bumblebee. It gives a specified time period that they must do their work. But it would be my understanding then that if they must do this work from April and October, they're going to come in April 1st and maybe by April 10th, all the trees are going to be gone. So it's, it's a huge conundrum here. It's like, my understanding is the site development is pretty much going to mean the trees are gone. But this bumblebee that is part of our condition that we want to kind of protect, we're just going to remove the habitat during the timeframe that it's set.
Is the bumblebee's habitat the trees or is it the swamp though?
Well...
You know, I mean, that hasn't even been considered.
Well, I mean, it's kind of like, the, the trees will be gone. So then the next year, it's like, well, it says here that any work within the wooded areas, well, the next year, they'll say, well, there is no wooded areas. We can work all year round, which would technically be right. I'm just pulling up here the nuts and bolts of how it really works out. But I, I will ask you this, then back to, did anybody from the, I know you're pretty knowledgeable on this, but did anybody there that visited give any inkling as to what may have caused the sinkholes? I mean, I know from what little I've learned what it's supposed to cause, but did they ever say?
It's, it's, it's from the fractured bedrock, which is right underneath the ground. And we have a very low amount of soil protecting it, so it actually goes through. If you read his report...
Well, the general belief, from what I hear from water areas in California, a lot of others, when you pull something out under the ground, when they do fracking or when they longwall strip mine, or when they take a lot of water out, the water underneath is actually providing some stability to the ground, and therefore, when that's not there anymore, what is weak and can crumble, will crumble. So you had quarries happening, Lincoln Stone Quarry was there when I was a kid, it closed, and they started filling it back in. But Larway's been growing for decades, as well as that whole area is probably 40, 60 feet above the elevation of the river is, so I guess, you know, we could probably have experts come in here and argue day and night, is manmade activity creating more of those sinkholes or is the natural terrain creating more of them sinkholes? I think that's out of... I think that's out of all...
Are there more sinkholes than there were in 1999?
In that report, they go back to the sinkhole that is by the Joliet racetrack, and they did aerial photos from 1939 on. So you can see the progression of that sinkhole.
Unfortunately, if I may, the 1939 photos are so blurry, you can't tell for sure what you're looking at.
Well, I think that's part of the problem with the copying of it over 30 years.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just commenting, if I had to make a decision in that photo, I'd turn that photo off.
Well, the people who...
Because it shows me nothing but blobs.
The person who did the survey, the study, Pano, and I believe it was...
It doesn't matter who the person was, I'm just...
Then they actually looked at all that information, and then they determined, the Illinois State Geological Survey determined it was a karst.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, they're not making this determination tonight on, we have to make this determination tonight on the evidence that we are presented.
Right.
You know, and if I presented you that evidence and you had nothing but that photograph to look at, what would you determine?
I would say that I would go by the expertise of the Illinois State Geological Survey, Mr. Pano, who came to the area, looked at the area, identified the area, looked at the maps of the area, studied the area for several, several years.
I'm not just hearing the fact that it's a karst area, I'm saying that...
And they determined that it was a karst aquifer that needs to be taken seriously when you're starting to work on it.
I guess to move farther on this, I would ask the staff, but I mean, there's nobody here from engineering that would be able to answer any questions. Are you aware, are we allowed to have clean construction debris put in a karst area? Does the county even have karst, a map that shows what are karst areas? It's out of, you know, you're not being, Brian, you want to tackle this? This is something that would probably be, this case will move on, so this would give us an opportunity to get more information before the people that really make the decision, I guess, could make the decision.
I am not aware of a specific map that identifies the karst areas that is in our possession. There is nobody in our office that has any expertise in karst areas. There's no engineering, or engineer employed by the county that has that type of expertise. So I wouldn't be able to comment on that.
So as it stands, I mean, technically, our code would allow...
Well, there's nothing...
...any such development, because we don't specifically say that development is not allowed in a karst area.
There is nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibits that, but that's looking at zoning, okay? So we're one step in the process. That means, is this an appropriate area for this use, based on the zoning regulations and the criteria and the zoning code? And that's your job to determine, to figure out if it does. Staff has made their recommendation on what they believe is, you know, does this fit in the area or not and meet the criteria. We're one step. You still have to get a state permit in order to operate here.
Good. So the parameters she's talking about may fall more under the state permit than at the county level?
I can't guarantee that they're looking at that, but I know water is a big concern to the state in monitoring, so, you know, I just don't have the answer to, will they evaluate karst areas? Will that be a factor and whether they approve it? I can't tell you that.
So you just mentioned a state permit. Is there any mention of the Army Corps of Engineers?
There's not going to be, the only way Army Corps of Engineers is involved is there's a connection of a navigable waterway to a wetland area, and then there's a couple of ways out of that, that if they disturb those areas, they could buy into a wetland bank. Army Corps could say it's a permitted use. It would be up, we'd have to get a jurisdictional determination from Army Corps. They would say whether they're taking jurisdiction if there is a wetland connected to waters of the US, or it'll be local, and if it's local, then we have requirements for setbacks, or you have to buy into a wetland bank at a greater rate than what you took away.
Take away from your last three minutes is basically, there's nothing in this zoning request that violates the zoning standard of Will County land use.
That's... I determined...
With what the state recommended it says.
There's about a two paragraph section on CCDD facilities, and there's nothing in there on karsts.
Thank you.
I want to go back and beat on this thing about the woods and the bumblebee, but it's like...
I thank you very much for your testimony. Yes, would you please come up?
Thank you again for allowing me to come up and respond. I have had a chance, though certainly not as much time as one might like, to try to digest the materials that you just received about the karst area, but in hearing, you know, the comments, I think I can, I don't know if I can fully address them to everybody's true satisfaction, but I certainly believe that we have enough information to at least help you in making your decision this evening. So I'm going to try to go through these quickly and in somewhat of the order that they were raised. One of the first points that was brought up was Joliet's South Side Comprehensive Plan. So since that comprehensive plan was instituted by Joliet, which I will remind is a guideline, not a strict rule. A guideline, Joliet, for the last 20 years, has largely ignored, as almost every industrial development down there has come since 2007, including Arc Terminals, the tank facility, the Vulcan Materials Quarry, and I believe possibly even the Gallagher Asphalt Plant, though I think that's actually in the county. All of that development down there has come since the enactment of this comp plan, but if we're to look at the comp plan, what it does show is that this property is appropriate for industrial zoning. There is a portion that is flagged, however, the county does not allow split-zoned lots. So wetlands, in and of themselves, can, it can exist in any zoning category. They are not limited to ag or residential, and since, I would say half or more of the property, based on the very small maps that we can try to lay our eyes on here, shows that this was, even in Joliet's own plans earmarked for future industrial, the zoning request before you tonight would appear appropriate and in alignment with Joliet's South Side Comprehensive Plan. Again, it's a guiding tool, but if we're to rely on that guiding tool at all, it would support our request, not hinder it tonight. With regard to the IDNR comments about the osprey and the bumblebee, certainly, we've had a lot of discussion, but I would note that if you actually read the IDNR, you know, the reports that we got back from IDNR, one of the conditions is that we submit regarding, a study regarding the osprey. We have no qualms with the condition that's being placed on the special use permit to do so. It's just not timely to do so if this request is not approved. If this, if you guys recommend denial, land use follows up by recommending denial, and the county board rejects this proposal in its entirety, and this property remains A1 ag, taking the time and expending the resources to conduct this study serves no purpose. So we are happy with the condition, we are willing to comply with the condition, but the fact that they contacted IDNR yesterday to get a response asking whether we submitted it, it's just not timely. If this project moves forward, we will comply with the condition, and this study will be done, and if that study limits what we can do, we'll only be allowed to do what the state will approve us to do, and if that study says we can't touch certain parts of the property that we were intending to fill, then we will have to live with that determination or address it, you know, with whatever restrictions or conditions the state may apply to us. With regard to the bumblebee, it says that there is evidence of the bumblebee in the vicinity. It does not necessarily claim that it is actually occupying our property, only that based on its presence in the vicinity, we could be a location for it, which is why they're saying, if we're going to operate and do things, we should do them at certain times of the year where we are not going to disturb their natural cycle, and if, to your point, if the trees aren't there the next year, they have no habitat, and therefore, they will rest someplace else. Again, that is not a bar to development, it is a recommendation that we take action during certain times of the year that will not adversely, it's hard to say not adversely when we may be removing potential habitat, but not harm them in their actual native cycle, only limit potential future. But again, that is a normal condition. This appears in these reports very frequently, and to the best of my knowledge, all of my clients have done what the reports have suggested, and we've complied with the conditions that were placed upon us by IDNR. As far as the engineering of the site goes, as I've stated before, stormwater runoff, compaction, what, how far we can fill, how high we can fill, where, when, why, all of that will be dictated by future state regulation and building permits, fill permits, we have to submit to the county for full engineering approval, which is not before you tonight. This is a preliminary concept to get a zoning change and a special use, nothing more. It does not permit anything without further action and further engineering review. So again, we would certainly continue to work with staff, continue to work with the state, and any conditions that arise out of those furthering discussions, we will certainly comply with. With regard to the, I know soils, you know, no, what the heck, hydrologist, that was the term I was looking for...
Or hydrologist.
I can't tell you exactly, you know, I can tell you what karst means and what that, you know, can do, but what I can say is, the information that was provided was from 1994, and as I mentioned, almost every quarry out there, apart from the Lincoln Stone Quarry that's existed for longer than I've probably been walking this earth, Arc Terminals, Center Points Intermodal Facilities, Vulcan, all these developments have occurred largely since that study was done, with no discernible problems that we are aware of. And to further reiterate, as I mentioned, this property was purchased from Lincoln Stone Quarry. Lincoln Stone Quarry has been leasing all of their property to Midwest Gen, who operated the coal-fired plant, for decades. This very site will continue to have monitoring wells that Midwest Gen installed, because if there is a problem with karst soils, and if there are toxins, and if there are pollutants, they are north of this in the Lincoln Stone Quarry, which is a coal ash borrow pit from that coal-fired plant. So if there are issues environmentally, we are, we have the monitoring wells on our site, which would pick it up, and what we are planning to do by putting clean debris, clean construction debris and clean soils should, by the very definition of, you know, karst soils, that's the water is, it's dissolving, it's limestone or other things that would otherwise dissolve, we're actually filling the holes and putting more soils on top of it and creating a greater buffer to anything that might leach down than what is currently there, which should be a net benefit to this resident and everybody else in that area that may be drawing from the aquifer, assuming that they're in unincorporated and not drawing from other water sources. I would also note, and I may have just caught the lady's address, you know, wrong, or Google Maps is completely jacked up, which is not unheard of, but if I heard her right and her address was 1850 Brandon Road, according to Google Maps, that's in Vulcan's Quarry. So I don't know exactly where this individual is in relation to our property or to our site, but at least according to Google, 1850 South Brandon Road, or 1815... 15?
It's the house just south of the batch plant.
Okay.
That fired.
Because I was going to say, I was like, it's either in Vulcan's pit, or it's near or adjoined to the Gallagher Asphalt Plant, both of whom are doing the exact opposite of what we would be proposing to do, which is put clean fill in a hole to build it up, as opposed to either running an asphalt plant or digging a bigger hole and pulling materials out. So while I do understand there are concerns, all of the tests that are required, we will be running at the appropriate time when they are required to move forward, but what's here tonight is simply a request to bring the zoning into conformance with both Joliet's comp plan and what the county views as the future trend in development for this area, and to allow us to continue to pursue with the state our clean fill construction debris permits. And again, I know I've beat this horse to death, but I'll say it again, if the state determines that this site's not appropriate, they won't give us the license to do it. If the engineering doesn't support it, we'll only be able to do what the engineering allows us to do, and that includes stormwater management, erosion controls, and everything that was raised in these reports. You know, we are taking the steps we are required to take, we are complying with code, and as staff points out, based on the factors that you're asked to review, this site meets their criteria for our two requests, and we would respectively ask for a recommendation of approval. And I'm certainly happy to answer any additional questions.
And your compaction, as I understand it, of the, of the site may not take place for 10 or 20 years, because your filling process may be that long?
I can never speculate. I know my client, you know, has other, you know, sites throughout Will County that, you know, because again, the goal of these sites is to have them roughly contemporaneous to different places where work might be done, so that way, we're minimizing vehicle traffic. You know, you don't want to be going from one end of the county to the other to drop a load of, you know, fill. So there are more of these, they fill at different rates. It depends on how many jobs are in the area, it depends on, you know, exactly what we're doing. This is a relatively small site in the grand scheme of things. Other sites, you know, just north of this, if somebody were to try to fill the old Lincoln Stone Quarry, you know, that's dang near 100 acres, you know, I think it's 60 some odd acres, I think, is the actual hole itself. That would take a heck of a lot longer than filling the back third of a 10-acre or 11-acre parcel. That being said, it could be five years, it could be six months if road construction's popping off as it's been in Will County for the last couple of years. So I wouldn't, I cannot, in good conscience, give you any sort of definitive timeline, but I would not expect that this thing is going to be fully filled next week, next month, or perhaps even next year, but certainly, that timing will come, and it could be five years, it could be a year and a half, I couldn't tell you, but it will be done as the work warrants the fill.
Before you leave then, so I'll concede that the map amendment from A1 to I2 fits the county parameters, and I don't have the wherewithal to really rule on the effects of the clean construction demolition debris, but I want to confirm, if we approve this and they don't get a state permit for three, four, five years, is this something that will sunset and they'll lose the ability to do that? Like, certain, certain, they have to have it enforced within a certain time period?
The special use permit, you're correct. The zoning, of course, would be a permanent change unless somebody came in to rezone it to something else, but yes, we would have a set window of time in which to bring that CCDD online. I believe we have the right to request one extension, which would go to the land use committee, and they would have to vote to grant us that extension, but we would have a window of time. I do anticipate that if this moves forward and is approved, I believe the engineer, you know, with MG2A has the vast majority of the materials ready to submit to the state, but again, cart before horse, we're trying to, just like the study for the osprey, we're trying to, again, as many of you know, I've made this statement numerous times for numerous clients, nothing's cheap anymore, and nobody wants to throw good money after bad, so we're here seeking these approvals, knowing that we have more steps to take, knowing we have more money to invest, but we want to make sure that we're spending that money in a wise fashion, and we will comply with all these things going forward and get all these submittals in, but it's just not timely to make them now, when it's currently A1 ag with no special use granted. All of these other conditions are just premature and, you know, really wouldn't do anything other than run the risk of burning money if it's not approved.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
All right, on ZZ-25-111, M-25018, and S-25-043, I would like a motion.
All right, on ZZ-25-111, M-25018, and S-25-043, I would like a motion. Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Roger Bettenhausen? John Kiefern?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Louis Navrat? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Four, two.
Second.
Four conditions.
The motion is second.
The second with the four conditions.
Yeah.
Roger Bettenhausen?
Yes.
John Kiefern?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Louis Navrat? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Four, two.
Four, two, four, two, both cases, both. They've passed.
And both these will be heard by the county board, correct?
Yeah.
So Karen, I had a crazy thought today when I got out of the shower. If you're paying prevailing wage to your Uber, you're losing money on these meetings.
Our next case tonight is ZZ-25-119 slash V-25-161, and Jesus Presenter will be the presenter.
Yes, thank you. As mentioned, this is zoning case 25119. The owner of the property is Peter Krasznowski. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a single-family residence on the property. Here we have a zoning map on the property with the property outlined in red. The property is Lot 4 in the Delwood Highland subdivision. When the parcel was created in 1923, it was zoned R1. The parcel was rezoned to R4 in the county comprehensive rezoning in 1978. The parcel is 4,800 square feet in size with 40 feet of lot frontage. It does not meet the R4 lot standards, but is deemed a legal non-conforming parcel as the parcel was created in 1978. Here we have an aerial view of the subject property. The property is currently vacant. The applicant purchased the property in 2023, and as mentioned before, would like to construct a single-family residence. And the reason why it might appear that you have heard this case before is because in April of 2025, the applicant did apply for a variance for side yard setback from 10 feet to 3 feet, and a variance for street yard setback from 30 feet to 10 feet. During the public hearing, the Eastern neighbor voiced concerns regarding property damage during the construction of the residence, and questions on how the eastern property line will be maintained. This commission voted 3 to 2, thereby recommended denial of the variance for side yard setback. The applicant did appeal the decision to the county board, which required a 3/4 majority vote, which was 17 votes, for the decision to be overturned. The final vote for the county board was 16 to 4, thereby failing to overturn the decision. The applicant is now back to this commission requesting a new variance for side yard setback to allow the construction of single-family residence to move forward. Per the submitted concept site plan, the applicant is seeking to construct a 60 by 20 foot home with a 22 by 15 foot detached garage. The home and the detached garage are the structures that will encroach onto the eastern side yard setback. And here we have the concept site plan submitted by the applicant, showing the proposed driveway, the proposed single-family home, and the proposed detached garage. Here we have a few photos of the property. First, the view looking south at the subject property. The view looking west along Del Park Avenue. The view looking east down Del Park Avenue. The view looking north across from the subject parcel. The view looking at the western adjacent parcel. And the view looking at the eastern adjacent parcel. Now to quickly go over the variance standards and review criteria. Staff finds that the plot owner is due to unique circumstances. As mentioned before, the lot was created in 1923 with only 40 feet in width. Any new structures on the property must meet the current R4 zoning district setbacks of 10 feet from the side property lines. It would be challenging to develop the parcel with the home that meets the R4 setbacks, given the parcel dimensions. Staff also finds that the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. Many of the parcels within the general subdivision contain a structure that appears to encroach onto the side yard setbacks, including the eastern parcel and the southern parcel. Now looking at section two, staff also finds that the particular physical surroundings does result in a particular hardship. As mentioned before, the narrow 40-foot lot limits the owner's ability to construct a practical residence on the property that meets the R4 setback. Staff also finds that the conditions on which this variant application is based would be generally applicable to other properties. As mentioned before, there are several properties in the surrounding subdivision that are also deficient for R4 standards, and would result in the same difficulties when building a new residence or a structure. And lastly, staff finds that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or improvements in the neighborhood. Before construction of the residence and the detached garage, a building permit will be required, and a building permit cannot be issued until approval from the Will County zoning department, engineering department, building department, as well as from the fire protection district and the road district. With that said, staff is recommending approval of the variance for side yard setback. Of the agencies notified, there were no comments or concerns, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any concerns, citizens, or objectors to this case? No concerns, citizens, or objectors, okay. Is the principal here tonight? We have no concerns, citizens, or objectors, and you have a recommendation of approval. Do you want us to just go ahead and take a vote, or would you like to come up and speak? Okay, please do. Please give your name for the record.
My name is Peter Krasznowski. So, thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. Really, the only reason I came up is because...
Pull the mic up a little for you. Thank you.
Yeah, really, the only reason I came up is because I made the mistake of not getting up when I was at the council meeting for the appeal, and I believe that that was detrimental to my case. So really, we just kind of ask if there's anyone that has an indication that they would vote no on this, if there's any concerns that I can address. I would, I would love the opportunity to do that. I do have some notes prepared that I can share, but in the, in the interest of saving everybody's time, we can skip those and move on if there's no, I guess, concerns.
I think that you're not going to get an answer to that question, so...
Oh, okay.
What happened, and this has been happening, we have a vacancy. You only had five commissioners here. So technically, we didn't turn down your proposal. We just didn't have enough people here to vote 4 to 2.
Yeah, I understand.
And Chairman does point that out to people. We've had times we've had four people, and all it takes is one person to say no, and you're between that rock and the hard place, which is what you got put into.
Right, yeah, is exactly what happened last time, and the same thing that happened with the, the appeal. So I guess, you know, if there...
How many board members weren't all there?
Yeah. So, yeah, I didn't mean, but I did learn a lot from that process. And so I think the reason, you know, from my understanding that it was rejected last time was the neighbor's objection. I thought that we handled those objections pretty well with maybe be missing one thing of his concern about the machinery that's coming into the property that would eventually end up digging the foundation, or digging for the foundation, right? And so I learned a little bit more about that. His concern was that it was possibly disturbing his septic system and his well. What I've learned from my civil engineer that conducted the survey on the property is that the septic system and the well is almost never installed underneath the actual residence, right? And so the residence is actually what's closest to the property line that we share. So the most likely scenario is that his septic system and his well water is actually completely on the other side of the property. He has two lots together, as opposed to, I only have one, so he has 80 feet wide. And his, his home is actually only nine feet from my property line, right? So most likely, the septic and well things that he was concerned about were, are on the other side of the property, and therefore that any digging or any machinery that would be on my property for the construction would not, would not disturb any of those items. The other thing that I learned is that there were, they, the building department would not issue a permit to dig within 30 feet of any septic or well items. And so I've wanted to mention that as well, that, that, you know, even if the zoning does pass here, or the variance does pass here, that he is still protected in that case by the permitting process.
Not here, still, apparently, he's okay with it.
Okay.
In my mind, if you're not here to complain, that's a approval.
Great. All right, then I will...
One other thing I might mention to you, on small lots like this, sometimes it's advantageous to investigate cavity systems as opposed to septic fields.
Okay, my plan is actually the sewer hookup there, because there is sewer hookup in the neighborhood, but...
So I'm just, I'm just saying that I would investigate it and talk to my engineers about it.
What, what is it you said?
Cavity system.
Instead of a conventional septic field.
And how would you spell that?
So T-I-T-E.
But if you got a hookup, it's a moot point.
Okay. Thank you very much for the advice.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Motion for ZZ-25-119, variance 25-161. Approval of variance for side yard setback east from 10 feet to 4 feet.
Right.
I have a motion, I have two seconds.
Kimberly Mitchell? John Kiefern?
Yes.
Roger Bettenhausen? Louis Navrat? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Passes.
All right. Our next case tonight is ZZ-25-103, M-25-015, S-25-040, and V-25-146. Kelly Kozicki is going to be our presenter. And this case takes place in Joliet area.
Yeah, so this is ZZ-25-103. The owner is Chicago Land Trust Company. The agent is Biffen Sharma of Existential Counselor Society, and the attorney is Barry Miller. The agent is requesting a map amendment to R5, a special use permit for a halfway house, and a variance for street yard setback. Here is an aerial view of the property with the subject property outlined in red. The subject property is zone C4. The lot is 44,000 square feet in size and has about 150 feet of lot frontage along Patterson Road. The applicant also owns the R5 subject property to the west. The subject property is currently approved with a 5,300 square foot commercial building, and the applicant is looking to renovate the existing commercial building for an inpatient drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility. Here's the zoning map of the property. The subject property is zone C4, and has R5 to the east and west of the subject property. And then there's industrial zoning to the north and south. Here's a survey of the property showing the existing building that is intended to be renovated. This existing structure currently encroaches on the required street setback for the R5 district. If the map amendment is approved, the agent is requesting that the existing building is to be brought into compliance with the R5 district setback requirements. Here are the architectural plans for the building. This operation will be open 24/7. There will be about eight employees working on site, and it shows to have about 13 beds. This, this is the view looking northeast along Patterson Road. This is looking south across from the subject property. This is looking southwest, southwest along Patterson Road. This is looking at the subject property from the southwest corner. This is a view of the existing parking lot on site. This is looking at the west elevation. This is the south elevation of the property. And then finally, this is the east elevation. Okay. So to go over the map amendment review criteria, a full analysis in the staff report, but for a summary, within a half mile of the subject property, the area includes a mix of residential, commercial, industrial, and recreational uses within Joliet and unincorporated. Residential uses include primarily subdivisions with a few standalone homes. There are commercial uses located along Patterson Road, Joliet Street, and Route 53. Industrial uses are located to the northeast and west of the subject site. There are also multiple rail lines that are located directly south across from the subject property. There are also natural and recreational features, including Hickory Creek located directly north of the subject property. For zoning districts, the surrounding area includes agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial districts in both Joliet and unincorporated. Overall, this surrounding area of the subject parcel is, has different zoning districts, and includes a mix of residential neighborhoods, commercial businesses, and other industrial uses. So to go over three and four, the property is currently zoned C4 with an existing commercial building and parking lot. It can accommodate any permitted uses in the C4 district. This lot was originally zoned B2 business/tavern, and then the property was rezoned to C4 in 1978. This area has seen a trend towards industrial development with an increase in industrial uses in the immediate vicinity in the early 2000s. For five and six, staff finds that the area allows traditional residential development. The proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility has a commercial character, though its residential component comes from the temporary housing for the clients. Counseling services considered, can be considered medical offices, are part of the program and align with commercial zoning. Overall, the commercial uses fit the urban community's principles and complies with the proposed county plans. And lastly, there was no LISA score for this parcel. This is to go over for the special use permit for the halfway house. The criteria can be outlined on the screen, and detailed analysis can be found in the staff report. First, the establishment and operation of the facility will not be detrimental to public or general welfare. Halfway houses provide care and support to individuals, and the property is surrounded by vacant land or industrial uses with no nearby residences. Staff finds that the special use will not negatively impact neighboring properties. There will be no expansion of the building, and renovations will be mainly interior, and the exterior improvements will only be cosmetic. The special use will not impede the development of nearby properties. For number four, proof that adequate utilities, access, and drainage is required during permitting. Staff found that traffic impacts will be minimal due to the direct access to Patterson Road in a large existing parking lot. Finally, the applicant has requested a zoning map amendment from C4 to R5 to allow residential use. Once approved, the property will fully conform to the R5 district regulations and all applicable commercial codes. And then for the last criteria I'll go over, is the variance review criteria. Staff finds that the owner's request for the variance is due to unique circumstances. The owner is attempting to reuse a vacant building for residential purposes, which requires a map amendment to R5 and compliance with the setback standards. Granting of this variance will not alter the essential character locality as no building enlargement is proposed, and the structure has existed in its current location for decades. Any renovations will comply with all county codes, and the building will remain consistent with the surrounding area. Lastly, so of agencies notified, there were no objections received, and staff is recommending approval of the map amendment from C4 to R5, approval of the special use permit for a halfway house with three conditions, and approval of the variance for street yard setback. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to speak as well.
I have no questions. Anyone have questions? Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any concerns, citizens, or objectors to this case tonight? There's one, okay. May I hear from the applicant, please? Or agent of the applicant?
Dr. Biffen Sharma from Existential Counselors Society. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight, and hopefully everyone had a happy Thanksgiving with their family and friends. Okay, so I'm just gonna read this, and, and more than happy to answer any of your questions that you may have. I'm the founder and CEO of Existential Counselors Society. Since 2016, ECS has provided residential treatment exclusively for men. Over the years, we have watched thousands of lives change through a model rooted in existential psychotherapy, a model built on meaning, identity, purpose, and personal accountability. We have seen men rebuild families, careers, and self-worth, and while the work continues, it has also revealed another truth. Community has been asking us loudly and consistently to extend this care to women. Our hospital partners, behavioral health teams, case managers, emergency departments, social workers, and substance use coalitions have all come to us with the same request. We need a dedicated, safe, trauma-informed program for women, and we trust ECS to build it. This proposal was not created in a boardroom. It was created by the voices, many of who are actually here in support of it, of the people who care for women every day. They have seen the success of ECS' model. They believe our impact on men can and should be extended to women who are struggling just as deeply. Today, women in Will County face tremendous barriers to accessing residential treatment with more than a hundred and twenty thousand Medicaid enrollees and only one behavioral health provider for every eight hundred residents, the need is abundantly clear. In 2024 alone, a hundred and four individuals lost their lives to drug-related causes in Will County. And ninety-one of those deaths, eighty-seven percent were accidental overdoses. Emergencies, emergency room departments saw a nine percent increase in overdose visits, and Narcan was administered more than twelve hundred times countywide. Behind each of these numbers is a family, circle of loved ones, and an opportunity for intervention. But intervention requires access. And right now, for women in Will County, access is limited, delayed, or nonexistent. That is why ECS is seeking the approval to bring the thirteen-bed residential unit to this community. This project is more than an expand, is more than just an expansion. It's about a redemption story. Our own redemption story includes time when I purchased a former bar, a place that once contributed to addiction, transformed it into a center for recovery and meaning. Today, we have the opportunity to take another property and turn it into something the community desperately needs and is requesting. A pillar of hope for stability and a renewal for women. This is not about building a, a simple facility. It is about transforming a space that once held pain into a space that creates possibility. We know this model works. We have operated successfully for nearly a decade, a decade here in Will County and Joliet, accredited by the Joint Commission, licensed by the state of Illinois, and trusted by courts, hospital coalitions, and providers across the region. We accept only thirty percent of our referrals, ensuring safety, structure, and clinical appropriateness. Our facilities operate with twenty-four hours, seven days a week supervision, controlled access, and rigorous compliance. Economically, ECS has contributed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually in local vendor spending, and as, and as national research has shown, every dollar spent on treatment returns four to seven in savings through reduced ER visits, law enforcement issues, and healthcare costs. But beyond the statistics, there is something greater at stake, the dignity of the women in this county who are asking for help. Women are mothers, daughters, caregivers, survivors of trauma, drug addicts, and valued members of this community. Women who deserve the same opportunity for recovery that we have given to men for years. ECS is ready. I am ready. The community is ready, and the need is undeniable. With your approval, we will bring a women's program to Will County that reflects the county's values, such as compassion, responsibility, and unwavering commitment to public health. I thank you for your time, your leadership, and your thoughtful consideration of this project. I'm happy to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? The other question I have, and I presume you have enough people already to fill a new facility, your backlog of women patients.
We get numerous packets a day that they, they don't know a hundred percent of the fact that we're currently a male-only facility.
Yeah.
So I do have to reject female packets that do come in from hospitals and different places for people that are seeking treatment, and then we try to get them into other treatment programs. But the wait is an incredible issue, and a female-exclusive-only program is not, there aren't many, if any, in the state of Illinois that I'm aware of. So this would be a exclusively female treatment facility, and my plan includes ensuring that it is run by empowered females that are licensed professional counselors that have a passion for helping women.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
You know, overdose deaths, emergency room visits, the percentage, is it more from prescription drugs or illegal drugs?
There is a mix of both. So there is a epidemic of over-prescribing. I have a PhD. I'm not an MD, so I don't prescribe any medications. My facilities are, we don't have any controlled substances at our facility. Most people that are coming in are receiving antidepressant, antidepressant medications. Just your run-of-the-mill, that is your standard for depression, anxiety. We don't do any controlled substances, no benzodiazepines. I'm not in Suboxone maintenance. We don't do that type of work at our facility. We get, when we get a patient or a client into our facility, our goal is to really just work with them with all of the trauma and issues that they've experienced in their life that have gotten them this, to this place of drug addiction. And when they leave, they can decide what their care is beyond that. But we ensure that while they're under our supervision, that they are medically monitored, they are security-wise, staffing-wise, thirteen, thirteen-bed facility, and we have, currently, the one I'm running, it's got thirteen beds, and I have ten staff members. So our ratio there is pretty strong, and I always try to focus very, to create a small treatment center, not a conglomerate or massive facility that is very chaotic. So I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would you please take a seat right there?
Yes.
May I hear from the concerned citizen?
Good evening.
Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Art Ziesmer, representing Azzea Properties. We own about fifteen of the lots from Joliet Street down to McKinley. And the only concern I have is the zoning change. I mean, we're looking in the future here to develop industry along the street because we're surrounded by industry. And I don't want to, changing this zoning back to residential to affect maybe any ongoing zoning changes of the other lots on the street. I mean, I'm all for the treatment program that's needed.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to become a hotel or apartment building, you know, by changing it to residential zoning.
Right.
So that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else who cares to speak tonight? No? All right. A zoning case, ZC twenty-five dash one-oh-three, and at all, I would like a motion.
Mr. Chairman, KC twenty-five dash one-oh-three, with map amendment M two-five dash zero-one-five, for a map amendment C four to R five.
I have, did you second it, Kim? Thank you. I have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Louis Navaret? Roger Battenhausen?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Chairman, same case for a special use permit, S two-five zero-four-zero, for a special use permit for a halfway house.
With three conditions.
Louis Navaret? Roger Battenhausen?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
KC twenty-five dash one-oh-three, variance for B dash twenty-five dash one-twenty-six, variance for street yard setback from thirty feet to fifteen point two feet.
Louis Navaret? Roger Battenhausen?
Yes.
John Keefner?
Yes.
Kimberly Mitchell? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
All passes six-zero.
Pass all the way, sir. Seeing as, seeing as you've been here since I started here this morning. Thank you. You're welcome. Our next case tonight is the temporary use permit text amendment. And Mr. Brian Radner will be our speaker and leader in this case, I think.
Help me, I'm confused again. I never can figure these out in the mail.
All right, give me just a second.
They're gonna extend the length? They don't have to come to us every hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, now there's a hundred and seventy-nine here as opposed to a hundred and eighty. You notice that?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. We do need to take a vote to go into the public and open the public hearing for the text amendment. So first, I'll let you do that.
Mr. Chairman, motion to open a public hearing for temporary use permit text amendment.
Okay, have a motion in a second?
Do the notes? We lost our note keeper. I have made a motion, and the committee has seconded the motion to go into a special use permit or a special use, no, public.
Ready?
Yes, please.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, Kimberly Mitchell? John Keefner?
Yes.
Roger Battenhausen? Louis Navaret? Karen Warwick? Chairman Hughes Tippin?
Yes.
Six-zero.
See, I was gonna mess up your minutes by taking a verbal vote, but I decided I'd wait for you.
All right, so we got a public hearing tonight on the temporary use permit section of the zoning code. And little bit of background on this. The latest version of the temporary use permit section was last changed when the entire zoning ordinance was redone and became effective on October first, two thousand and twelve. Since that time, there's only been very minor changes to this section. This would be, I don't want to call it substantial, but it would definitely be a change from where we were at previously. The reason that we're here tonight is that we, as staff, we have been receiving complaints from township officials about temporary use permits that continue on and on and on without an end in sight. At least, that's their belief. For example, the Planning and Zoning Commission approves a temporary use permit. It's valid for a hundred and eighty days. Then they come right back and ask for another one, and then they come right back and ask for another one. So we received some complaints from township officials about that process. So the county, the Land Use and Development Committee asked us to start looking at some language to address that situation. Up here on your, on the screen, and maybe I'll try and make this a little bigger, is the temporary use permit section of the zoning code. And basically, what it does is it says what temporary use permits can be approved by the zoning administrator, what temporary use permits require approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that goes for agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial districts. So no real change to that section. The, the biggest issue here has been the temporary uses that are not in the zoning code and which all of those temporary uses have to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if it doesn't say it in the zoning ordinance, then I have to bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you get to determine. So that's why that section is highlighted in red. So we looked at, what are some things that we could do to limit this? And the Land Use and Development Committee came up with two ideas. And this is the text that's before you, that's the subject of the public hearing tonight. We'd have a new section N that would say the maximum length of a permit is a hundred and seventy-nine consecutive days per two consecutive calendar years. Meaning you would only, if it's not allowed in the zoning ordinance, they would only be allowed to ask the plan commission for that one time in a two-year period. So there would not be able to be consecutive applications under this provision. The only, there would only be one exception, and those would be permits that are subject to events of public interest because they didn't want to limit that because those are limited to twenty-one days per calendar year. So for example, some of you may know the, like the haunted houses that you've seen. And if they have an element of them that's not permitted by right, then they have to come to this commission for approval. We've had no trouble with those uses, and they're only, they only operate, you know, for like a one-month or five-week period, and then they're done. So they still wanted to allow that. And then there's one other section. It was O, and under O, we're gonna create something new called special temporary uses. And that's basically a catch-all for anything that's not allowed in the section that they could come to the Land Use and Development Committee and make their case to, their case to that committee of why they should be approved. So we would call that a special temporary use. And the language that's there is temporary uses that exceed the duration, frequency, or operational standards established in this section may be considered as special temporary uses. Such applications are subject to approval by the Land Use and Development Committee. The Land Use and Development Committee may impose conditions deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and to ensure compliance with the general purpose of the zoning ordinance. So those are the two new sections, N and O, that are part of this public hearing. We have not received any written comments on this. So I have nothing to present to you from any agency, any group, any township. So no written comments. This is the forum now for anybody that would like to provide any verbal comments, which I'm not really seeing anybody out here, but I'll let you ask to see if there is anybody that would like to provide any comments.
Yeah, I see no one in the room, but I will ask, is anyone like to add any verbal comments on section N or section O? Proposed sections?
So if we were talking about a section O, let's say that, that exact situation that I was telling you about that maybe those township officials are not a big fan of. If they wanted, somebody wanted to do something like that, let's just say maybe operate a truck terminal in a commercial zoning district, and they want to do it more than one time, maybe they wanted to do it for a one-year period, then they could go to the Land Use and Development Committee and ask the county board members if that was something that they'd like to allow, and they would be able to grant that or deny it. So essentially, they're kind of taking in the power away from this body, and they're gonna take on that responsibility.
And I also noticed that you have delineated carnival or circus and skipped the word rodeo.
Well, those are, rodeos could fall into a different classification. There's also, we've also had another temporary use request for specific limited events that this board has seen, or this commission has seen in the past as well, so.
Which are our parties and things like that with horses involved?
I mean, that gets difficult. I mean, we're not, we're not in the business of regulating people's personal parties, and this section makes no changes to that, so anything that's a personal party, there's no regulations in place now or in this change that would regulate that. Those are specific events. And then rodeos can fall into another classification, whether they're permitted by right, if they're a certain number. they're permitted by right, if they're a certain number, or they require a zoning change. But so that's a little more complicated, but it's not really covered by this section.
Yeah. Well, that's why I mentioned it's excluded.
Where is Colin at tonight? That's a great question. Probably at home enjoying the evening. So no comments received. You do have the opportunity to comment, and I'm going to get to that here. But now that we've taken, did not receive any written comment, we look for any verbal comments, we do have to have a motion to close the public hearing on the text amendment.
Listen, I'm gonna poll the board. Does anybody on the board want to make a comment that will be included in the general record? Okay.
Chairman, motion to close the public hearing for the temporary use permit text amendment.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call?
Kimberly Mitchell. John Keefner.
Yes.
Roger Benhausen.
Yes.
Louis Navarette. Karen Warwick. Chairman Hughes Tippin.
Yes.
Now that we're back in the meeting, I would make a recommendation that we go ahead and include section N and section O in our verbiage for the new code, and ask for a motion for that from one of you stalwart people.
Need to read all this?
All right, so right now, I'm being real formal. With the text amendment, the zoning ordinance states that, you know, with text amendments, does the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment correct an error or inconsistency in the ordinance to meet the challenge of a changing condition? And two, is the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment consistent? Oops, got too far ahead of myself. Sorry about that. I'm gonna have to zoom out so people can see this for the record. Consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the county. So if you, we assume that this is all positive and accurate unless there's something that you want to comment on in saying that it does not. Okay? So then, when we get down to it, we have three options for the planning commission. You can recommend, as the chairman was about ready to entertain, that the proposed text amendment be as approved as presented, or it could be approved with modification, and once we complete that, then the, or you could, sorry, you could recommend that the proposed text amendment is denied.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recommend that the proposed text amendment, be approved as presented by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call?
Yes.
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 Louis Navarette. Karen Warwick.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and for the record, here is the schedule. This will go to the Land Use and Development Committee for their review this Thursday at 11:00 a.m., and then it should be on the Will County Board agenda, provided that they forward it on for final adoption at the December meeting on December 18th.
So it should be passed this year.
It should be passed.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you anything to report from your department by chance? Okay. Anyone else on staff have anything to report? All right, our next meeting will be December 16th. Hopefully, everybody will make it, and ask for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Okay.
I had to do that, you know?